Call to order, the City 20th Board of Alderman meeting for Wednesday, October 16th. Please stand before the public.
Call to agents, due to flag of the United States of America, to your government for which it stands, a nation for God, physical liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Alderman Eisenhower here.
Alderman Wilson here.
Alderman Whitmore.
Yeah.
Alderman Sokol.
Here.
Mayor Porchus.
Here. You have an agenda which has been properly posted for tonight's meeting. There are no amendments to the agenda, I think we should approve these.
So move.
Thank you. No favoring?
Aye.
And approve. Citizen comments at this time? Nothing? Okay. We'll move on to approve a consent agenda, Board of Alderman work session minutes, 9:26. Board of Alderman regulating minutes from 10:02. Build list from September 28th to October 11th. Credit card statement for September. Questions or comments? Take a motion to approve the consent agenda? Are we prepared to approve?
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Board of committees, Mr. Crawford, Park Committee. Do you know anyone?
Hello there. I chaired a meeting in Park Committee last week and had a sit down by telecommunications. April was kind enough to kind of run things for me here. But we did have the opportunity to welcome our two members, Leah Harwell and Mike Prusen. Always want to have a Prusen around on Parker Lord. We decided that's going to be a rule going forward. Um, we talked about, uh, the first thing we talked about for a while was, uh, Family Fun Day. Kind of the, everybody disappointed obviously that we had to cancel that. One of the things we discussed, which I think we'll, we'll try and look into at least, is next year when we're doing contract, and we could maybe do this for other events as well, but one of the things that we talked about was when we're doing contracting, see if we can build in a rainy day with our, our fender. So that if, if for whatever reason this happens again, we've already got a date slotted, a week later, or a day later, or whatever, probably a week later would make more sense especially, given what happened this time. But, uh, we're gonna look into that, uh, if we have any successful action. Uh, but if, if that works, that's something we could do with, you know, the, uh, the concerts, uh, et cetera. Obviously, we scrambled with fireworks here not that long ago, so it's, it's something we should, we should definitely think about. Um, we, we also talked about what to do with leftover snacks, treats, and prizes. The prizes obviously keep till next year. Um, and, and some of the, like, the lollipops will probably be okay. Probably okay in fifty years. Had a long, sure. Uh, but we are gonna hand out some of the snacks and the other perishable stuff at the movie night. Probably we'll get, get through some of that, then we'll have it around. We still have some, like, oh, we didn't do the personal development, but, uh, most, most of it we'll be able to handle. And a lot of it, like popcorn is, uh, is dry. Mix for the cotton candy is dry, so that's something I can do. I understand that we have a creature that we need to make sure.
He may more, he's been eliminated or something.
He may have a problem.
Yeah.
So that's family and fun day, any, any other comments or questions? Um, movie night's all set, everything's good, um. Uh, the schedule for movie night is seven o'clock, it probably should have, looks like sunset is six thirty, given the fact that it's getting chilly, it probably will get, moving that out next time. We'll, we'll see kind of what the crowd looks like, but we'll put it together. Cause it's gonna be seventy-three days, so it shouldn't be bad, but it's gonna get chilly pretty fast after the sun goes down. Um, winter lights, uh, contracts set, the contractors set to come out and do most of the lights. Uh, Park Committee has decided to volunteer to create a lighted tunnel of wonderfulness on the bridge, and so we are in the process of scheduling two meetings. One to talk about what we need to do that, and how we're gonna construct it and so forth. Obviously, that's one of the reasons why we made a group set. And, uh, and then we'll have a second, uh, meeting for sessions, put it all together. Uh, other than that, I think we're set for winter lights as well. Uh, we talked about the survey a little bit, uh, about the tennis court area. And, uh, April let us know that, that before we were thinking about putting out a survey. My, our suggestion was that, uh, then we broaden that survey a little bit. Find out how often people come, how many people they come with, oh, how, how, how many of their family participate, what activities they use, what, what areas of the park they do, including that area. But just make it a little broader, so it's not completely focused on one area. And have people a little less, a little more open to thinking about the park in general. I think it's probably, depending on how it goes, it's probably not a bad thing to do on an annual basis. At least, sorry, yeah. It's gonna be a survey for the general release, not just the other events?
Yeah, I was planning to send it out, um, both through our email list, residents, basically. And then we have some non-residents, like they don't have email lists as well from surrounding area, but also share it, you know, on our website, on Facebook, because that gives you the whole smile of, oh, people are dressed.
Yeah. Yeah, and given my experience, you're not gonna get eighty percent of response rate, so more people we touch with it, the better. Um, and then finally, we talked about adding three additional events in January, in March, in November. Kind of bring us to one event for fun, which is a soft goal that we have, I should say, for the twenty. And we're, we're currently coming up with ideas for what to do for those events. Uh, but I, I think it's a, a really interesting concept to have. Ice sculpture in Jan-, you know, you know, with chainsaw. Blocks for ice chains. And that's it. We'll let you know when our sessions are for bridge lighting, construction, et cetera, in case any of you are secretly into bridge lighting, um, as well as, uh, we were, we're the happy, except I think I did, you have to know this other event. I'm thinking about November, maybe have something like that, I think, but, uh. Last one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business, uh, our insurance claim update. Roof?
John, you're up.
Okay, starting with collectives. On buildings, new building, gap six months to get a start. Or you have to start following process all over again, don't fill up the six month. From the end of March, from May? Yeah, from there.
I think from the time we initiated the claim, correct? Yeah, not from when, not from when we ended up.
No, no, when the claim, so getting that started. And like I said, you have six months to pick somebody and start for, or any claim if you can. And on the truck. That there, uh, maybe change from collective. And she said that that number that you're given for the truck. It's like, oh, I don't know what I'm saying. A free shop, two body shops, they're a year out. When they go along. So she said ultimately it's up to you guys, or I, or Mike, keep it, or fix the truck. Choose what you want to fix on the truck.
See? Okay, I don't know.
Can I ask you about that call, if there are any, um, different obligations we have as a city versus a private, in terms of what we do with that insurance money? Use it all, or we don't use it all, decide to be selective about what we pay on the truck?
Right, you can, so with that.
Okay.
We, we're gonna be in the money for that, and if you still find anybody else, you can split it over, you know? If you got the, they, they plan. Yeah, the only thing, we have another half arm, we didn't fix the truck. You're talking to them with more damage than with the other truck.
How much damage did the truck?
Uh, from the front, figures, they haven't cut the check yet, but it's right around eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Wow.
That's, uh, is that, that go on for a year or so, or is it been good for a year?
Been good, they are, uh, the plane is, didn't have a lot of things, get it done.
If I mean the body shop, body shop, whatever price they gave you, that's good for, yeah, for a year.
But I haven't given you a price, all I have, no. They said they're a year out, but I wanted to find out maybe that is what this is doing for us. And insurance also, that is covered on rental vehicle. Like, all the rental vehicles, yeah, the truck, yeah. Probably gonna take a brand new truck. With work.
Is it cosmetic, or is there correct writing, or correct windshield, or?
Right.
It's cosmetic.
You know, I think it's got appropriate, the plastic piece for the Michael's car. That's all, it's not like. It's up, yeah. But should I call front fenders and roof?
Well, we guarantee it's not even that expensive. So, uh, we took ours in, Grant originally was given forty-five hundred for this car. Tom was originally one fifty-five hundred for his car. Brad's was nine, and Tom's was thirteen. But you don't pay the difference, that, that would be the reason to do the claim, is that, then they work with that person, and whatever that difference is, they pay to the shop, or we, uh, they're, they're basically, you know, for Tom's car, he was bringing the hood. Side, you know, you know, like, there, there was new pieces, you gotta be mountain, David, Tom, wasn't he, that just built it up?
Yeah, where it gets, it's expensive, it's, they pop the roof.
Yeah.
They pull that shit off, put it with a fender tensioner, good.
Any idea when they can start? You're out there, I think you're out.
A few places that I talked. And I talked with Paul Boyer today, they wanted to get rid of the truck on the road. Today at nine o'clock in the morning, they leave it, but.
For a year?
No, I'm just, like.
They're making assassins.
Yeah. I don't think we can use a rental truck with ice. Salt.
I don't.
I think you originally were thinking maybe just replacing the hood and both fenders and maybe maybe. So, maybe that is something we could get accomplished, but, uh, I'm focused to them.
That would be cool.
Yeah. So can you let John sort through that?
I'm like, when are they?
I think it's, it's, it's.
That's a, yes.
Just replacing the hood and the front fenders with whoever you can find to do it in some reasonable timeframe. Yeah. Yeah, make it all into.
Aye. Okay, that was it on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna be ready, I've got the pictures up, if you wanna start there, or?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull them out.
Sure.
I've been in conversations with, uh, Carlos. Expert exteriors. They're gonna, maybe a hundred pictures up there, we'll go and pick up. And where do you see this area here, hot, basically? Not a good thing. It all has to do with the, uh. Yeah, see those scalpers there? That's what we call gutters, grays.
Basically, not the whole, pointing to.
The ceiling part is lower, so. So, that's causing a hot issue, which is gonna ultimately create a. That's just a, a pressure.
That's mold, isn't it?
Not just free.
It's another area where water is pooling, hotting, collecting debris, and raining.
And there's, there you go. Water here. Right there, birdish, red, circle of the shrew.
Yeah.
That, looking up and up. Look at that, like that, because there's that view in brain behind them all.
So they punctured that.
Yeah, they put it through the brain. And they put that on.
So, roofers screwed us?
I guess so, sounds like it.
Very much.
Did pass inspection by someone when we opened this building, so we're not sure how that happened, but.
Oh, I meant, uh, but the scalper star, he said that they could come in and if you build that up, so the grain probably, like, they're going on corners, under what they built up.
Have they given us an option of basically getting out for the?
Yeah, he worked on that, and I, he gave a guy, I was. It's a, gonna be a, pretty links problem, you know? Get that all together.
I think we're gonna wanna guarantee whatever has happened, has to happen. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Do a half-assed job.
Right.
Gonna have a guarantee for it.
He came in and looked at the drawings that we had, we had a hard thirty. Uh, installation, uh, you were up there, you said that's good, but you still really like to do it for. Just make sure. And, and other companies did that for thirty years. That'll work.
Chance to do it before winter?
He was wanting to know how soon you guys wanna start.
We already have the money for the car. We do. It's, 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 but if it's gonna be more, obviously, than our initial payments, then you have to go back to Jerry, just the same.
Well, he will, yeah.
Right, right, exactly, that's what we pick, yes, and once you pick the person, then you're done. Right, and you can start, so since we already have our check, true, we could start anytime, because they paid the roofer after it's, you know, whatever's back.
And I'm, I'm no roofer, but this guy.
Oh, what are you doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he's winning out the right things, I don't, roofies.
The building is gonna be here a long time, we need to make sure it stays here.
Yeah, and I'll tell you that if you get a, we get a flat roof, we don't want that coming out of our pocket, right? You know, so might as well, we have a lot of money to put towards it, might as well get fixed.
And the thing is, if you get the wrong person up there, they're not making part of it.
Absolutely.
Expert exteriors. They have to put a pitch on the roof so, so the water goes to the drains instead of that.
Right now, as it's, as it stands right now, that a roof, a flat roof is too low, so it won't rain out, so.
The ponds.
Yeah, because they can build that up and make it rain better, but they're going to not want it without it.
Additionally, do we have gold issues?
No, we didn't bring any of that up. Now, who knows, from my head.
It's in a roster.
I'd like to, uh, make it bad, but it's down.
Did you ask them for any references, that expert exteriors?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna put all that together, maybe break it up. I'm, I'm gonna try to set up to have him come in and explain everything to you guys.
Good.
Because it would a lot better, I mean.
Could be doing it at the next meeting?
We're working on that. Because we have the, uh, file numbers, okay, maybe I'll talk to them on that. Really like, for you, we can.
That's a good plan. See what we can do on the truck.
Yeah, it's gonna be bad. Your problem, looking at, probably a year out, my roof, because right now, I'm like, I probably facing a real bit.
We're all getting used to seeing cars driving around with dents on.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I asked John to, um, since we've been talking about, uh, him doing kind of a staff report, so I think we're gonna have John, um, one meeting a month, similar to what Lena does, this report, stuff like that, kind of give a rundown of what he's been accomplishing, so that we know kind of what the, our maintenance schedule looks like. So, we started with his first report here this month, so go ahead.
I just listed each day of what I've been doing. Park intersect, park, that's the part. Took me three days to do the stop park. Because of the weather. Cold, a little bit more dry. So, just stop park, much, make drive. So, what do we get? Sixty.
Plus the line up to hill.
Yeah.
They were also trying to print up lines one of the hill on Halloween.
That's it?
They put out the cones. No sooner than they put them out, people were moving them to drive.
Yeah. And, yeah, place trash can up in Northwood, find a pickup table. Actually, finish the stop park, have a dialogue in park, daughter, you're a roadie. Then around back, he came back, and I'm like, I have no bone to eat. So, because I'm clearly showing it is not my fault. Like Alex, I can't center and turn that, I just felt too small for this. But if anybody's fault, I have no idea. But, but he gives me a job down north with, with the, by, by what county's telling me. The office up there telling me. So, nobody's gonna tell me what to do, but I hear.
He was displaying that to see.
Yeah. God, it's like, whatever, deep up in that, people without knowledge. So, if I got me left, it'd be okay. I just wanna point out that that is not my property, that's no property, the roadies, yeah.
It's coming from your property.
Right, you know. And then I met with Crowder down there. To look at the roadies here. And he suggested, you know, what we do, clear out that area. Off the bottom, clear it out. Then, do what needs to be done.
Clear it off with drainage control.
The type of area between the tennis courts and the bottom, like, hillside.
Yeah.
But.
Towards the rest.
Yeah, like, basically what all the rest, the shield, the tennis court, from the rest of the park.
And I like property, all the way down to the park.
Yeah.
Thank you, right there, right there, by, 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 we did.
Then a newer service, they, they.
Where he has installed the self, sorry, but that's not just.
Did you do that? The tennis area that, uh, Brett Crowder and I looked at. That. I was feeling more comfortable if we was raining, it's nearing it. Have to look at it. She was, uh, I don't wanna, I made it sure that we could just get up there and go, you know, we start that three down, clear that all out, I'm calling it, very good problem.
Well, we cleared that out, we better have a design and drainage plan for that. Yeah, that vegetation, open water, water.
Yeah, yeah. And take that out of there, it's a good question, a lot more, I'm not, I don't.
Taking that. President, Robert's right.
Well, well, you could take it out, the chicken replaces. Yeah, he's actually saying that, not saying to replace it, but. Get it all wrapped. Get that, that little, the first, out of that wider area. Uh, replant tree, come down, hit a tree, and then go.
Yeah, I, I would think we would have several drains up there, draining down there.
I did see a drain high up there. Somebody had to solve.
What, the tennis?
Drain pipe.
The tennis court?
That's the way.
We did, behind the tennis court, four, it's a registered property. There is a French drain up there, probably clogged up. Man, all the way to.
Drain pipe, that's the second one, it's taken out, drain.
It's got holes in it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, right. I don't know, we've been talking about it last week.
Some, we've done some work up. Awesome. Of course, we're in, I think, just, probably, people go, they were hitting, I was marching down.
But I just. I value a lot that Brett Crowder said, but I think that to cover our budget. Or that.
You know, he's, he's pretty good, he's pretty good in the storm. Maybe not the expert, but I don't know if he has the expertise either. But. Would be interesting to get to different.
All I know is he would suggest then, they clear it out, and then see what we, uh, and then he brought up about terrace, if it, if that be an option, he wants to have your own up there, on my side. And just the area, he saw, and he's like, just clear out, add in the ballpark, along the road, like. That you're up there, I said, right? Clear that area out.
I mean, that's not bad, but it's more we do today. Yeah, I know. Let's hit the bushwhacker in there.
Okay, so bring it up, like that. Take the dollar, cut it down, pull some side ground. Chipper, and leave the chips up there. And my whole problem with that is, we can buy the chips upstairs, we get a ready, and all the chips are gonna go down there, pop.
So if we, if we do that, Jim, uh, he's opened a lot of different options for them. Except, uh, wood structure still, we're on the hillside, you know, electrical panel, we get, so I still, but. And I wanted to build the old-fashioned, not the old.
And we wouldn't go over by that far. But he looked, and he said that there was a three, six, four, five, four trees up there, see? That's, that's it, y'all. And three, money, I suppose, that, that money, I bought for that thing around. That's where that's at, I'm gonna get the actual numbers from him.
John and I can work together on what this format looks like, if you guys have thought about what.
I really, I really appreciate this one, I really do, because. God forbid, nothing ever happens to you, John, but we're left in a case where you're tied up for a little while, and we need to do stuff, and so we've got some stuff to do.
Yeah.
And we have no idea how, let's see, that workout cover is at, that should get it, uh, there's a lot more of it. You know, a lot of it.
Yeah. Yeah. That part we know. Also, a public ambassador.
Yeah, but I'm not getting the phone call, but they're looking for me straight. Yep. And let's see. Then the next deal is Harley. Herpes, maybe not the better, well, oh, forty one, one, Tom, right? And.
Yeah.
They think that's a hundred, twenty dollars, something like that, all out. I do that.
Yeah.
Should just be considered a heating item for the lawn.
Oh, when was the last time they did it? We oughta, we oughta do it every year. We'll put that on our annual.
Ron mentioned to me today, too, that their, um, loaning contract is up, you think at this time?
Yeah, at the end of this, eight.
The end of the year, oh. So, I did not have a chance to look today, after he told me, um, for the contract and find out, but I don't know where he, he might be in this, uh, like, over, we need to go out to Vidagen, which we were at eight, I think it was Harvins four. At least. Six or eight years, yeah, so it might be time for us to go out to Vidagen.
Probably five years.
Name me.
But they do a great job.
Yeah, they do a. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, seemed like you were after him.
Oh, yeah. And the thing is, with him, but I really like. I'll look up, take care of phones right now, oh, wow, they do it.
They know where all the sprinkler is, or. That's valuable, yeah, they do a nice job, and I'm like, too.
So, I will look into that, and we can discuss the next meeting, whether to go out to Vid or if you just want to extend, that's right, John's already got a proposal from them for. Twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, it looks like, so.
Yeah.
You have something to look at if they're at my team.
Good.
All right.
Good, John, so we're gonna look forward to seeing you at least once.
Yeah, and we're gonna do first meeting in month, right?
Glad to have you.
The over there, talk to you.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, John.
Great, thank you.
Bad move, what's the dollar? Fair.
Okay, that takes us to new business resolution, twenty-four, that's seventeenth. That might be.
Sure. A resolution of the city of Quinn Oaks, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a consent to assignment of the rights and way use agreement for communications facilities between the city of Quinn Oaks and Everstream Solutions, LLC, Unite Private Networks, LLC. I'll let all of that be. While you're with all of the cities that have been through this.
So, Quinn Oaks, like, all cities have, uh, a lot of people, and you're right away, one of them is Everstream, they have, I think, just a little bit of facilities on Big Ben, but, uh, they are a long, big bill, they'll be there, but anyway. They got bought out by UPM, UPM, out of the, I'm, what, ten months, the city blessed, then taking over the user agreement that, uh, that Everstream had with the city, and, you know. I'm not sure they even really did do that, but except they do it, we're unapproved. Uh, oh, they don't have any plans either to do anymore, anything, they kind of do it on a, if somebody asks them to do basis, right now, nobody's been asking, so they're not really taking it for that long. Is this underground work? It's already existent soon.
Yeah.
And they're just taking it out.
So, have they formalized, we, their, kind of, actually? So, this is basically. They just wanna make sure all of these current contracts are transferred.
Exactly.
Can I just hand motion chip for it?
Yes.
Motion chip for a resolution, twenty, twenty-four, that's it.
Second, on paper, I, I will adopt a resolution, four, that's seventeen, uh, now that's one. Early execution.
Thank you.
No discussion items, hurry to record.
Um, I will just say that I'm doing a little bit of this and a little bit of that for everyone, that's it, that's all I can. Nothing exciting.
Yeah. We'll see if any glories, uh.
Yeah, we'll see.
If there's a, if there's any glory in that. It looks pretty efficient, so I'm gonna get a call. City board.
Okay, so I have a few general updates, um, I've been kind of slowly going through the website and adding some features that I think that we were missing, so there's a new, um, residence section, you guys can see now that I added up here at the top. So that everything is more consolidated, so kind of all of the pages that we have about residence, uh, services, that kind of thing, um, I set up a new get involved for people that want to volunteer. And, um, more information about our new procedure for running for the board, so, in your abundant free time, please feel free to peruse the new website. Um, the replacement radar sign, the solar sign, the bowling, has been ordered, so we're expecting that in November, and then John will be able to put it up on the existing bolt, so that one will be of our, this year's conversion to the new solar. Um, at the next Board of Alderman meeting on November sixth, I'm going to start that, I mentioned when I first started that I wanted to do kind of informational sessions for the residents prior to the board meetings, so we're gonna have our first one on November the sixth. I have a guest speaker coming from MSD, talk about their community assistance program, so this is also part of a new initiative that they're launching to try to get more people into local meetings, and spread the word about the programs that they have, so they're gonna be here at six o'clock. To give a brief overview of their community assistance program, which is, um, help with bills for, um, people over sixty-five, disabled people, things like that, so it might be relevant to some of our residents. And they're just going to answer questions about it and explain how to apply to the program, so I'm gonna do some promotion for that, so hopefully that will be a little added bonus to come to the meeting and stick around afterwards, so.
Will they explain the bills?
I don't know, but you're welcome to ask, you're welcome to ask.
So, we're starting at six, that, that?
Well, we're not starting at six, the informational session will start at six, it's not a part of the technical board meeting, it's just going to be meeting here with the, um, MSD representative, everyone is welcome to attend, of course, but the board meeting still will not start until Thursday. So, um, also, we're going to serve as an election sign recycler, the program that the county has put together with, um, Public Services, one of the track collars. And so, there will be a period of time where people, right after the election, six, ten, where they can bring their signs up here, they cannot be traditionally recycled with normal single frame recycling, so they can bring them up here, separate them from the stakes, and then they're gonna take both pieces, well, John is taking both pieces up to the recycler. And, um, then they'll take them from the site and repurpose, so I think that's a nice service, might help some people get rid of some, um, nuisance yard signs that they have in their yards, so post-election, we'll be talking about that, we'll bring our signs up there to get rid of them. Um, we talked a little bit about this earlier in the meeting, but, um, a couple of code violation updates that, there's a brought to my attention, um, the county inspector has visited in the Crescent Avenue property, um, has talked with the property owner there, um, so. He's aware of what's going on, we're still awaiting permit applications, the county has not gotten anything from him, from what I understand, the first two permit applications were, um, denied or rejected in their contract, so that's the update on that. Um, the vacant lot vegetation, oddly, been remediated by the homeowner, and I'm not sure about the vegetation issue over on Crescent, but then over there, but it isn't the contractor, they're gonna have to visit the vegetation situation, so I don't know if that's been taken care of yet or not. Um, divat updates, movie night, obviously, is this Friday, so fun to luck, everybody come to that, bring your blankets, they've already talked about winter lighting, that's gonna be installed November fourth through the sixth. So, um, either Paula or I will be down there with the contractor to talk to them about, um, how we can control the lights, I still am really lobbying for being able to turn the lights on during the winter lighting event, so we're gonna make sure that that happens, so I wasn't down to figure that out. And a little update, few updates on the Crescent Road, Stormwater, sidewalk project, um, contractors run into a couple of unforeseen issues with utilities over there, not at all surprising, considering that's an older part of the area, and the utilities were not marked, well, they were marked, but they were not marked where they thought they were, they were not marking people thought they should have been. So, we did have one homeowner that lost power to their house for about twenty-four hours, which was unfortunate, you know, um, but they, the contractor's been great, and have been in touch with them the entire time, and they are on the same page and working that out, so, um, there was a little bit of modification that needed to happen, we had, um, AT&T back out to look at their lines and make some adjustments there, so. All of that being said, the timeline is shifted, so we're going to need an additional two to three-ish weeks past what our initial agreement was with the contractor, so they have asked for sort of a grace period on that, and I told them that is okay, because it's all been things out of their control.
Um, did the contractor that they generated, the loan to the homeowner, didn't have power?
Um, they did not, um, I don't think the generator, I don't think that the homeowner asked for one, but, um, they are working with them, um, there might have been a little issue, we're not sure exactly with their, um, HVAC system or something like that, so the contractor's been very responsive, and the homeowner has not even contacted me directly, so I consider that a very good sign, um, ninety-eight. So, I consider that a very good sign, that if they were not coming to me and upset about it, then I think that they felt like the contractor was being responsive to them, that they're okay, so if we hear otherwise, I'll, I'll let you guys know, but.
Did we give them a gift certificate or something? We had lollipop.
Yeah, right, exactly. If I, if they are upset, I will definitely let, we'll figure out a way to help them out, but I, I think that they, you know, they understand that these things happen, especially when you're digging underground, these things happen, so. But the bigger thing is that we're gonna need an additional two, three weeks, so it's going to be mid-November, hopefully, I've asked them to really.
Thanksgiving.
Try to get done before Thanksgiving, because nobody wants their driveway torn up at Thanksgiving, so that's kind of the goal right now, so I'm gonna try to place with them probably later this week, early next week, guys, with this, we're still on the main gate, I'll probably visit this next month, so. And then, um, I have not heard back from boss lighting, last, late last week, he told me that they were still working on the equipment, so I'm waiting on them to give us some final numbers. So, and the last thing I got, just at the eleventh hour today, literally at, uh, three fifty-six, this came in, um. Tesco is going to be repairing the lot over here, so starting on Monday, the twenty-first, at ten P M, they're gonna do it in three phases, so, um. Based on this graphic that they gave me, it looks like there may be a period of time where we will not be able to access the hall, we'll see, so if so, I will, um, work from home, and I will make an announcement that we'll be closed for that day, but it may only be, hopefully, just the one day, and they intend to be done by Friday the twenty-fifth, at six A M, so. So, it'd be nice to have a new, newly paved. Any questions, Bobby?
Open comments, Lisa?
Um, no, I haven't.
Yep. They got a new. Did you want to, uh, comment about?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's essentially.
They're like, add the copy?
I did not get any copy notes, I wouldn't go to you first, but we'll talk about it at the next meeting, but basically that we're gonna talk about the project again, kind of the same way we talked about Dave's been out of town, so we're gonna pick that back up at the next meeting in November.
We didn't, over a week or something?
I think we're just gonna do it at the.
At the second meeting.
At the board meetings, yeah, not.
This is the second, we'll be at the meeting now, or? That's cool.
No, we were going to do the, Dave was out of town, you know, for like two weeks, so we are thinking about your backup, first meeting.
First, yeah, okay.
That is the tentative plan, we'll have it, obviously, finalized, and then ready to adopt at the first meeting.
Everything should be ready to go December the fourth, if.
Yeah.
Any closing question to comment? Yeah, I'll take the question to you. Second, on paper, uh, meeting here.